I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its history, its justice. First on the agenda will be Arnold Vedder and the other school board members to talk about snow removal for school routes. Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, I can first like thank you for your time for letting us come. We have school board representation and superintendents from Litton, H and B, and Stroudsburg. Litton superintendent had another commitment, so he couldn't make it today. So I had another board member come. I guess the reason we came is we saw that you guys were going to be talking about snow removal. And we just wanted to voice our concerns that we feel that the buses should be a priority. And that when there's a storm, after the storm, we've got to get the snow moved so we can start schooling again. So with that, I guess, I guess I'll start out with my concerns and I guess I would like the other ones to be able to speak if they have something to add.
Absolutely.
Okay. We, I guess in the past, we always thought our blade service was really good, outminded. Everyone seems to have a different opinion. Our blade service has been excellent out there for a long, long time. And I guess, I think part of it would help if our superintendents and the road superintendent would make some phone calls after a storm so they, so he knows when we're going to have school again. So he knows when the roads got to be opened. I feel our superintendents all have quite a bit of experience. And I guess if they think it's time to have a school, I don't want the road superintendent to say, no, we're not opening the roads. I mean, there's got to be some communication back and forth. So, you know, if they think it goes, I mean, they should talk to him. And I guess that's what I think should happen. So, other than that, I guess I didn't come here to pitch and complain. I, I, I think we've had pretty good service. It's just a matter of continuing that service. So, and like I said before, I think, I think the buses need priority that they've got to get in front of those buses or else we can't move. So with that, I'll turn it over to anyone who wants to add anything.
Big thanks to the superintendent of H and B. Just wanted to come just kind of reiterate what Arnold's saying is it is awesome to be able to work together and really come to the purpose of trying to get our kids educated. I know it's, this last storm was, was tough because there's a lot of snow that fell. But it was, it took a long time to get those roads opened up. We had people, everybody tried to work together. I think it's, it's probably not even just us as superintendents and the road supervisor working together. I think even the public sometimes needs to be helpful in some of that too. But I do want to say that I understand no matter which way you guys go, it's never right. As I sit in my own shoes, every time I turn around, I'm always wrong and I'm always right, just same as you guys are. So I respect what you're doing up there. The more that we can communicate and talk, maybe even before the season starts, where if we could sit down with, with the supervisor, don't get me wrong, I was new this year, so I didn't even know who to contact or who to talk to. If there's a way that the schools are always being contacted so that we know which routes to try and travel. That would help a little bit. I would say even if there was one pass going down those roads really helps us out a lot. Because if we got buses being stuck, we got kids that are stranded. That's your patrons just as well as it's ours that there's kids that are stuck in the middle of the road. So that's really a big concern to, to always be attentive to. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Well, I guess just to kind of add on to the conversation, I think probably a communication barrier that's existed at least when I've been commissioners between the schools and the road department. I don't think it's necessarily been a barrier because it wanted to be. It's just that it was never a part of the discussion. I think that's something that definitely after a big event needs to happen because, you know, the way the snow removal typically is done, like anything, is the federal aid roads, the main like farm to market roads have always been the priority. That being said, after a big storm, we just need to make sure that, you know, if that correlates with your bus routes, then that's good to start on. But maybe that's not the perfect road to start on right after a big storm when we know we're going to have school the following day. Like those are the parts of the discussion that need to be had on all sides, probably including the bus drivers as well as even the blade operators. Cause nobody knows these roads better than the bus drivers and blade operators. They're on them every day. So not just the superintendents, but probably the folks that are on those roads every day. So they know like 68th is going to be horrible after a storm. We're not going to go there right away at six in the morning. That one we might have to go around or something. You know, I just, those are the conversations I think it's going to benefit all sides to have all the way around. I don't think anybody here is not open to those discussions. I think, I think our communication probably just needs to be better all the way around. So not only do you guys know what to expect from us, but what we should expect from you too, in the same sense. Because I don't think, I don't think it's valuable for us to just have a specific certain way all the time when it's not benefiting the schools too. The whole point is the, the schools are the really the priority now. The conversations of the old milk routes and a lot of those things have gone away. So the school really probably should be the number one priority. And so then we need to have more conversations how to make that better for you guys, but also make it efficient for us too. Not that everybody's going out of their way to try and do something. But I think there can be a happy medium somewhere where we're all getting it done. And I guess that's my opinion. The other thing too is like the, the deciding of starting school late and all that. I've always found it interesting that there were more conversations had because it's like, well, how do you know the school's going to be late if none of the roads are open? Or vice versa, they could be all be open and you're starting late. And so that's where that conversation just probably needs to be better on all sides. So. But anybody else have anything to add on that, I guess?
The only thing I got to say is there are a lot of people out there that have private drives where they go to school that if we don't open the private drives that the farmers can get them open.
I know we, we have at least one for sure that I've had kids were out for about two weeks of school because they couldn't get out of their driveway.
So they, they had no way to open the road or?
No, at least that's what I was told. That they had no way to get access to the, to main road.
No neighbor, no nothing to help them?
Eventually a neighbor found out about it and they went and plowed them open. And that's how they ended up getting out to the main road.
How about your way, Arnold? Do you guys open your own private drives out there kind of?
I guess it's, it's different. Every road is different. I, I think that that's a conversation we might have later in the meeting about, I know you've got it on the agenda about part of the private drives, but the way it looks to me, if it's a road, like just a short road like what you have, what Dan has off the road, the maintainer doesn't open those. If you have a lot of the bus routes that have like a quarter mile road going in and then the farmstead is off that main road, like a driveway off, those in the past have always been open, at least in our area. But on our bus route, we got like 13 families and I believe there's about four that are like that. That would be my estimation.
I'm glad that got brought up because that was something, that was something else though that, so for the past couple of years, I know I've kind of, Jahash has been taking control of that really, but I've kind of coordinated with him about getting an update at school route every year. And he's done that with the maps. But that's really been the only part of the conversation we've had. Cause the, the one thing that changes year to year is you have folks that, they weren't on a bus route for 20 years, didn't have kids, their kids are graduated. They, they retire, they move, they sell the place, they rent it out. Now the folks renting it out have three kids and nobody knows who they are. They're not from the area. And so you have those kinds of miscommunication things too, where it's like, well, we didn't even know anybody who was living there. We didn't know they had kids. We didn't know they rode the bus or, so that's where part of that probably needs to really happen. Probably every like September to go, hey, this is our bus route all the way into the yard. These folks, this and that. I mean, that's, those are parts that have to happen. Cause on our part, one of us might know that that house in that neighborhood got rented out and they got a young family, but the other guys from that area might not know. The blade guy might not know. And that might get missed two or three times before somebody finally says something. You're going, oh no, we didn't know that. So that, that's a big part.
And that's a conflicting deal, that private driveway deal, in my opinion, in thinking. We've got buses that are running, picking kids up and dropping them off in town on the road. They drop them off at the driveway, the private driveway. If that's not shoveled or snow load out or pushed out in the skidstone, those kids have to stumble across that. I've talked to older guys over the years that made arrangements every fall of the year and into the winter. They had to sign an agreement with their kids for a housing home where they could stay during the course of the winter during adverse weather. And they had to sign this form. Those kids would stay in town if they couldn't get their private road open into the yard. There's other people I've discussed and talked with and it's, it's an arguing point. Their kids would walk out to the main road that was open by the county and the private driveway, if the parents didn't make, and make an effort to open it, those kids had to walk down to the main road to get on. And they're doing it, I think, west of Moffitt. They've got a spot on 1805, the Moffitt Road on the north side. The folks bring them out on the secondary roads to this point where the bus stops and picks the kids up. If it's an arguing point on private property with the county going in or the state, the state highway department is not coming off the highways, you know, private driveways, they will not do it. So I'm just bringing that point up as a valid argument. And I don't know, you guys want us to go up into the private driveways, correct? Is that what you're asking? Or just have the roads open up to the private driveways?
I think it would be nice if there was somebody that, like in our case, that would keep the kids were gone for two weeks, where maybe we could make a phone call and say, hey, if you're in this area, could you maybe help this family out? Because they're not getting to school because of their driveway issue. Something to that aspect?
Go ahead. I guess Dan, you're asking a question that we're not in all, we're not all in agreement with.
I know you're not.
I, I can give you my personal opinion, not, not as, as a group.
Right.
I'll give you my opinion.
Okay.
My opinion is if the bus is at the mailbox and he's got a half mile in and he gets stuck on the way in, you may as well not open any roads because no kids are getting to school. What's the use? And you know, they're going to drive. They're going to say, yeah, it looks okay. They're going to take off down that road. They're stuck there.
On the private driveway?
On the private road. So, so my point is if you only play some of the roads, it doesn't help us. But this is, this is my opinion.
Yeah. And you're?
It's not everybody's opinion, but it's mine.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's been done that way for as long as I lived there. I'm not saying that was right or wrong, but that's how it was done.
I think everybody knelt back then and they just opened all the roads, you know what I mean?
That's what it seemed like. Now, like I said, those shorter ones, because I asked the bus driver, we have a bus driver that runs our route that's been running for about 10 years. I called him, I said, which roads get open and which ones don't? And it seemed to follow what I told you before. If it was a road where the farmstead was off the road, off the private road now, they would open that private road out to where the house was. You know, like for instance, my road going in is between a quarter and a third of a mile. Okay. So coming off the gravel road, it goes in, there's an approach for the grand bed sites. There's another one for my parents' house. And then there's another one for a storage shed and another one comes to my yard. So I have four driveways coming off my private road.
It's a private driveway?
It's a private driveway. But I can get mine open. I mean, I can make one pass and open it, get the bus in there. But there's, there's families that, that don't have that kind of equipment. So I guess as far as the school is concerned, the school is required to hold the kids from the residence to the school. And it's, it's not an option. I mean, either we have to pay the parents to bring them to school, or we gotta go get them. That, that's the rule.
That's the rule.
That's the rule. That's how, that's how I understand it. So I guess if we only replace part of the roads, I mean, if the bus driver's supposed to call every person, is your road open? Is your road open? You know what I mean? And I, I just think it's going to end up, they're going to end up getting stuck in there.
See, that's, and this is, I'm just speaking from here. And I'm speaking myself. You go into some of these driveways and some of these yards, the guy that lives in that yard doesn't make no effort to open his yard up at all. So the plow comes straight in on a private driveway with a V plow in front, a wing off to the right. And these maintainers are long and there's no way to turn around. They, we're down, we turn around. They can't flip at a 180 and go back out the opposite way. It's unfortunate, but they can't. So they go in, they plow in, they push up a drift, they probably push out a fence because there's a six foot drifts in there. And they destroy personal property. And when they turn around and back up, Arnold, you know what it's all about with equipment? They hit something. Then there's legal recourse, a liability thrown back to the county. It's such an argumentative point. It's, it's unreal. I don't know what to say. But we're open to listening, you know?
Well, I think what needs to happen is as a part of our pre-winter meeting, if you would call it, which would be the ideal scenario, is like what we talked about, an expectation. And even that's where the bus, the, the route drivers and the blade operators probably need to be on the same page, more than even the superintendents, because they know the routes better than anybody. And whether that's having, you know, some kind of meetings even with your parents and stuff. Cause it's hard because some, some folks are up at 4:30 in the morning and they have the road open and the next guy doesn't, doesn't have the equipment. That really shouldn't prevent what's supposed to happen, which is the kids are supposed to get to school and the roads are supposed to get open. So I think there needs to be a reasonable expectation as far as, you know, when you have yearly conversation, that yearly conversation should probably include how far in we're supposed to go. Like, I mean, that's exactly, you know, and, and both sides should have a point to that. And the other thing about it too is that expectation also has to be managed with some kind of a timing scenario too though. Because if, if we are going to go into all these yards, that takes a lot of time. Like the one driveway, you know, a half a mile of driveway that might wind and not have the best ditches and might be worse than the main road, that could take as long as three, four miles of a pass on a county road that's straight and it's not as bad. And so that's where it all has to come together. There has to be a managed expectation on the timing and then the amount of work. Cause we can't have maximum work and minimum timing. That won't work. But I, I will say one thing, we have to prioritize the school bus routes. I mean, if, if the kids aren't going to school, then you might as well just shut the school up. So I mean, that's the case. So if, I mean, if that means us going outside of our comfort zone a little bit, then we just need to make sure that we know that expectation though. Not that it's always changing with every storm or, you know, and that's why these meetings before the winter to iron out, you know, because once you know your bus route and you're starting to pick kids up for one, two months, your route drivers are going to probably know like, you won't have to go into this yard. You probably should go into this yard. And then at least we have an expectation to pass on our blade operators. Like, hey, you know, this is a new yard. You're probably not used to going into, you know, we asked them if they want some snow removal. They said yes. And we're just going to have to manage it that way. Some people are going to ask for things they probably don't deserve and some aren't going to ask for things they do deserve. And that's never going to go away. But we can't prohibit that from getting kids to school and stuff too though. That's where that needs to be a priority. But Cindy, go ahead.
Are the plow, the people that operate the plows, do they, can they work like, not overnight, but you know, if like our storm had November, that those, there was a whole weekend that roads could have been opened up. But I don't know if you guys allow or have enough even to work multiple shifts over the weekend or into the evening. I know, I mean, I need to use your equipment at lights on and stuff like that. Because we do, we have never, and I don't no longer have children in school, but we have a quarter mile into our, ours is straight. And we have never had a maintainer come in on our road ever. We always had it open and we have a spot for them to turn around, you know? But yeah, I, I just wonder maybe on some of these larger snowy bands where it's done maybe by the middle of the night, Thursday night. So Fridays, that's clear now a little bit. Do we get out right away? And do we work Saturdays and Sundays? Or I don't know.
Well, I think it's, it depends on the event. I know like in early November, we were leaving snow for the idea of trying to get it packed onto the gravel so we could save some of our gravel. We don't like to clear the roads completely. So that, that first storm was tough just because we did leave more snow on there than maybe later in the winter because you're trying to get it to pack onto the road. And with the early snow before the road froze, that made it tough just because the road was even a little bit soft yet and you have the snow. It wasn't fun. But if we would've went out and ran the blades and scraped that snow, we would've lost a lot of gravel. So that, I mean, that's the reasoning why we did it. That it's not fun, but that's, and then the other thing too is a part of this conversation is the expectation of a starting time and a finishing time too. Cause I can tell you that I think there's some flexibility. We probably could start earlier in the morning or we could go later in the day. I don't think we can do both consistently. Cause after a while you just, you're, especially some of these deals where the storm is maybe still ongoing. You maybe don't have the snow, but now you still have the wind. So you clear the route on a Thursday morning and Thursday afternoon. And that's where these conversations need to be had on at what point are you guys going to decide you're going to be done early? Or is that something the road superintendent needs to be participating in a call and you guys going, hey, we're having a hard time keeping these roads open. Maybe you should shut down at 2:30 today because we can't be out till 6:30 at night when we were out at 4:30 in the morning. Or, you know, if you have an expectation of starting early that we can't be out 16, 18 hours a day, you know, it just, it won't work. It just, it's going to be too hard to manage. It's, so that's all part, this whole conversation is, we have obviously issues that we need to work out and expectations where, you know, I can tell you right now, the blade guys aren't going to start at five in the morning and go till eight at night to make sure the buses make it for three days straight during the storm. Like that's where there needs to be give and take. I think we can go farther than we've been doing, but then I think your guys' expectation of whether you're starting early or quitting early some of these days. Cause I don't want, I don't like guys out in the dark. It's going to happen, but it's tough, especially when you have wind and visibility issues. No different than your buses. You don't want them out in the dark and the snow, just like we don't want our guys out in the dark and the snow. We'll do it when you have to. But I think it's, it's probably unfair for us to say we're only starting here and quitting here. But then it's also probably unfair for you guys to be like, yeah, well, we're starting right away early in the morning tomorrow. And it's like, it's pretty bad overnight. Maybe we should start at 10 or you should quit at two that day. So we could try and work with each other.
I, I think that, that's another point. I, I think that conversation has to be had.
Right. And I, and not only the conversation needs to be had though, but like some kind of a protocol. Like, like if you're going to have your superintendent of your school talk to the road superintendent, or if you want the bus route, I don't know how you guys want to do it, but, but this desk here is probably not going to manage it the best way. You guys managing with, you know, if you're going to call the sheriff and it's going to go through him to the road. I don't know how you guys want to do it, but it needs to be a protocol. So we don't have 47 phone calls with 46 different opinions and then nothing gets done. That, that won't work.
I think Skylar, I think Rick called you that 22nd of December and asked you, you know, he was thinking not, he didn't think you'd have school, but he called you and asked if you're going to run. And you said you didn't think and haven't called school. So I think that's all it would take is the superintendent of the three schools to talk to Skylar and say, what do you think?
Right. I think that would be the best. Cause I, I'll just tell you like the way we manage the courthouse. Typically the way we manage the courthouse is I usually have a conversation with Sheriff Sanders first and foremost. What are you hearing from your various avenues of information, you know? And then usually we get ahold of Rick Masser with the DOT, you know, what are you hearing about no traveling? Well, you know, we're having a hard time. We're pulling the plows at two o'clock today or whatever. And it's like, well, we better close early or maybe not close tomorrow if the dang plows aren't going to be out. And that's kind of our, there's like a kind of a three-way protocol, which is how we decide if the courthouse is going to be open or not. And I, I think a simple way of, right, you, you guys want to communicate with each other and then you go, okay, we're going to have the superintendent from Litton after he's talked to the superintendent. You know, and it, it doesn't always mean every school's going to have the same weather too. So that's part of the problem. But just ironing out a protocol. So especially like with Skylar, if he's like, okay, the expectation is I'm going to get a phone call today by two o'clock from somebody telling me that they're closing early or if they're going to keep going, if I need to stay out late. And then that way these guys know by two o'clock, they're going to stay out late to get the buses home. Or if you're going, okay, we're going to quit early, but we're starting tomorrow at, at six instead of seven to make sure we get the routes open. I just think if that expectation is ironed out, I think we can avoid a lot of these type of issues.
Do you, like, do you talk to each other or?
All the time. I didn't have Skyler's number.
No, no.
I'm with the superintendent all the time. Yeah. That's what I fear.
Right.
It's a constant.
You know, is you're going to close school or have school or?
So you've already ironed out half the protocol.
That's almost taken care of. We just need to get ahold of the right.
We just need to break the barrier of getting, making sure that everybody's on the same page. But I, I don't think anybody's unwilling to coordinate or want to work something out. Cause I think, I think a plan that works for all of us is going to be beneficial for all of us. So.
I guess I would make one more comment on private drives. If you're going to change the rule or do something different than has been done, at least for this winter, you've got to, you've got to do what you did in the past. Agreed. You can't stop now. These people don't want, aren't prepared for this.
Yeah. You know, and that's what I totally agree. It's that it should've been something discussed this fall. And that's something we have to move forward. Try and finish out this year, figure out how we're going to handle it and then move forward and have better communication and know the bus routes next fall or until everybody get together, know what the best, you know? But I think this year, yeah, we just basically got to follow what we usually did and try and finish out the year.
There's, there's private drives where they're not farmers.
And people never had a chance to get a whole city out open enough?
They don't have, they don't have nothing to open that road. So at least for this year, I, I think what's been done in the past has to continue for this year. That's what I will say.
Well, the trouble is, is you never talk about snow removal policy during a nice winter or something. It gets left away. And then when a bad winter comes, it's like, why haven't we ironed this out? Well, we haven't had one for two years. So it's been a little, you know, but yeah, I, I think.
Anything else?
Yeah.
I do think it's important to recognize that the North Dakota Century Code does allow the county commission be authority to, at its discretion. It says to maintain in its discretion all public roads and private highways and roads that are being used as, as part of a regularly scheduled public school bus route. So what that's communicating to me is that it is at your discretion to clear a private road as part of a school bus route. Which I think with the communication and things that are happening on who can and who can't and who has equipment and who doesn't have equipment would naturally happen. But I don't think that, I mean, that's ultimately at your discretion. So if, if the commission is going to decide that we're not going to open that, then like Arnold said, then that needed to be communicated prior or the expectation needs to be set for next year. And it could be as simple as having a conversation with each family. Cause each bus route and each driver knows which families can and can't get out. And so if it's five families, if it's six families, if it's 10 families, that communication is ultimately important because it is at your discretion to open it for them. And if we're, if we're as a group going to say that getting our kids to school safely is a priority, then we need to exercise that discretion the way that it's been exercised before.
I think the biggest issue is that we're trying to figure out a matter so that you can get the timing of the route. You know, and that's the, the hard part about adding and subtracting work in the middle of the winter and all that. There's no way we can tell everybody, yep, the bus routes will be open by at least eight o'clock when, you know, it's a moving target for work. And I think that's the biggest issue with ironing it out. And then part of that is, you know, before the winter, especially even maybe with your bus drivers, maybe just maybe talking with each parent as they drop them off over the course of the fall or something like, hey, what's your plan for snow removal? And then have them then relaying that information to you guys or back to us or, you know, however we need to do it. But I think an expectation of where and when we need to be is, is going to be helpful for us to tell you if we can get there and when we can get there. So I think that's all part of it. But you're right. I mean, we can, I mean, it's, it's not a matter of violating the law or something. If we want to go into a private driveway, it's just a matter of managing the working expectations. Okay. Anybody else got anything to add on the subject?
I guess I got something to add. Like, an expectation has to be there. Like, how many kids do you have in the rural area, in the Litton area that come out of there?
We run four rural bus routes and I would say 120.
Okay. So you have four rural bus routes.
Yep.
I have two blade operators in that Litton area. So I can't get the, every road open to get every kid out in one day. It just can't happen. So there's got to be expectations that every bus driver can't expect a clear road when they take off from school. Cause what time do they start picking up kids in the morning?
Sort of seven, probably the earliest ones.
Yeah. So even if we started at four, we couldn't get them open and fast enough to get every kid a clear, clear road for all those bus drivers to get there. So there's got to be expectations. I don't know how we want to do it. Like this is why this is a great thing to have this open discussion. But your expectations have to be reasonable, I guess.
Yeah. No. And I guess, I guess what I'm basing my expectations on is it's been done in the past. Yeah, no, and I guess, I guess what I'm basing my expectations on is it's been done in the past. So then like I told you earlier, I guess, I, I felt we had very good service. We personally and as, as the bus route, it's been excellent. This year was a little different.
This year was tough.
This year we had a 22-inch storm.
Yeah.
When was the last time we had a 22-inch storm?
Well, I think, I think one thing that we have to manage as a group, or at least our expectation is, is the the change in the rural area, let's just say the last 20 years. I mean, if you even look around your area, Arnold, or some of the other areas, you can, you can see a lot of like what you'd call like a non-agricultural family that lives in the country. But you know, when you talk about that, a lot of these blade guys probably didn't have to go into a lot of the yards. Like Cindy said, I mean, you know, they're farmers, they got equipment, they always kind of took care of themselves. There was 10 or 15 people on each part of that route that did that, now there's five. Now there's seven, you know, even if it just got cut in half. I mean, that's where I think we're seeing the change. I don't think the, the service has gotten, you know, obviously it's maybe changed. Maybe on the older days they were more willing to go out earlier and stay later and all those things. I, whatever reason that is, there's probably been some change, but I think the, the country has changed. The rural area, the expectation of some of these folks that move out to their place in May and they love it out in the rural country, they don't know what it's like in January. And I, I'm not using that as an excuse, but I'm saying that that's part of some of the change too, I think. And that's where the expectation has fell on the county to bridge that gap. And that's been a hard thing too, is some of that, so.
I think the concern over priority on how to address two blades on four bus routes in part would be taking care of the communication. Cause your bus drivers are going to know where the roads drift in and which families need, you know, where to prioritize your time first. Because there may be one family they can't get to, or you may have another route where there's 10 families they can't get to. And so if you can prioritize and have communications over with bus drivers and whoever else is driving the roads on what closes first, what's easier to open and the timing of it, that would solve a lot of the concern. Cause the notion that you would have two blades on four bus routes start to finish before 7:00 AM is not very possible. But if you can have a conversation where you know that this is the bus route, this is where it's filled in and this is where the pickups are, then you can prioritize your time and efforts.
Yeah.
And that's the conversation that will be solved with communication, even as early as August or September when we're establishing our bus routes.
Right, and I think, and that's the other part of it too, is that even the timing of our route, either you guys need to understand how it works or we need to change it that fits your, you know, like there's some things where or west to east, north to south, however it is, so you have an expectation too of like, okay, I can run this and this route. But this route here, them kids might be late or we might have to make some phone calls or do something. And then they either, you know, you come in later or however it is. Cause like you said, managing the entire route to be open when school starts is probably going to be difficult and then that's.
I mean, maybe you should back up when I, when I say that my road was always open.
Yeah.
It was always open at some point.
Right.
That first morning when it was stormy, I, I pushed it open with my tractor.
Sure.
But then they would come in and roll back, you know, so, so the road wouldn't drip in as easy.
And maybe, maybe that part of that conversation is having what you'd call a storm route. And maybe it's pared down a little bit to the point where if someone knows like, hey, like they're not going to come into our yard that first day, we're going to run. You know, I, I'm just spitballing an idea here, but I think that's where the conversation needs to get had. I'm like, maybe if, if the storm is Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning, you just, maybe you only run town kids only that day with the expectation of getting them open the next day. Or maybe you do a compressed route where you run these main roads that you know you can get open and the folks that don't live on it, maybe they have to go online that day or their kid's just in the school that day if it's a big enough storm. I mean, that, it's not going to be an easy decision neither, but at least if you have more communication, you can bridge off of it and make it.
And Skylar has a legitimate point.
Right.
We've had worse snow events this year than we do
It's been tough.
in, in four years sometimes.
Six ninety-six, ninety.
So, so it, it, I, I understand, you know, but there is a problem, it's hard to get them all open. So I, I don't know that it's as big a concern as, as this year normally.
Right.
So, but I, I guess the last thing I would think of this whole thing is, it's, we just wanted to let you know that it's important that we got your buses out. And we, we want you to do what you can for us. And we understand that you can't move all the snow in one, we might have to move some ourselves. But for this, there's a few people that we can't get out, they don't, they don't have a good.
Right, and I, you, you never solve a problem unless you communicate it first. That's the big thing is that you, you folks coming in here, this is what we need though. This is how you solve the problems, by coming in and first admitting there's a problem. Cause if nobody comes in, we're like, hey, everything's fine, it's just a couple of people complaining and there might be a bigger issue. And so that's where the communication comes in key. And the other thing is, uh, Emmens County is no different than any other entity or business in the world. You always have to modify your thinking. Everything changes year to year. The, this doesn't always mean this and this doesn't always mean this when it comes to things like bus routes and stuff. They change all the time. Sometimes our operators change, you know, a lot of times you might have the same operator for 10, 12 years and some guys still do. Some folks are seeing a new face. That new face doesn't know every route or every person's ins and outs because he doesn't live out there with them or there's a lot of aspects that change and that's why the communication has to be huge to make sure that we stay ahead of it. And that's, I think, you know, I mean, Skylar's a new face to the area too. You know, everybody's a little new, the only way to curb that is through communicating. So I'm glad you folks came in, I welcome you to come in anytime. Same thing with calling folks, you know, reach out to us if there's issues, the only way we solve them is if we know about them. So I, I don't think this is anything we can't overcome, so. Okay?
I want to say too, I appreciate you guys coming in a hundred percent. And come in because the talk on the street doesn't accomplish nothing. Come in here and voice and tell us what's going on and what you feel about it.
And then I guess that's what, when I, when I called these individuals, I thought, let's go in and tell them, you know, how they feel. And there's no use, you know, screaming about it, let's talk rationally and see what we can do. So I guess that's what we did.
No, that's great, I think this is great, I think that's the only way we're ever.
And like you say about those families that don't have the means to open it up. Like you say here, notice like maybe going into next year to prepare for possibly that they won't open it up.
Yeah.
And what are your feelings guys, as a school route deal? What are your feelings about going into these private driveways if that happens that way? And being billed for these people that can't help themselves? And pay for that service, go ahead.
I, I think a way around that maybe be if they're not going to, if they're going to go and move to that position and into that vocation, if they're not willing to sign up on a form for you to come in and clean out their driveway, then I think if that like a safety or something down, it is damaged in the snow removal, it's on the homeowner at that time, not only for the county. I, I think there's something in place like that, if they still don't want to sign that, now it goes right back to them as an individual and now us as, as staff and school have more ground to work with as well.
By law, I was told yesterday, correct me if I'm wrong, I was told to sign a waiver liability will not stand in court. I don't know if that's true or not, is there merit to that?
It doesn't, but at least you have something to go with, you know, you have a little bit of work. But you know, this person did agree to it, I got paperwork saying that he did agree to it. A judge is going to look at that and say, well, what, you agreed to it, now why did you all of a sudden change?
Well, I think another thing too is I know, I know Skylar, later in the meeting we're to discuss it, but I know Skylar has brought up the idea of a, basically like a form, basically requesting snow removal from the county. That might be something really interesting with your guys' school bus routes to handle out early in the fall. So that way you can basically add that to your route, like not only are you going down 68, but you're also going into this place. We have a form in place, this is their address, this is, and then you have individuals that are requesting it versus people that are like, ah, we don't need that, we'll take care of it ourselves. And that would be a huge first filter to even know which yards we maybe are expected to go into, which ones we aren't too as part of your school bus routes. I think that would be a, a big avenue.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, I, I'm going to echo just what you said, cause I just got to, I'm telling my transportation director that next year when my bus drivers make phone calls, one of the things that we add to the script is, what is your intentions for snow removal? And I came from one of you guys out there.
Right, I think that would be huge because some people are going to say, don't worry about us, the next person probably will want it. And then at least you're know like, hey, once I get to this place, I'm supposed to go into this yard or this guy's probably going to have his open. I mean, at least for the school bus routes, that's something. Cause I think if we're going to, if we're going to break our private road rule for something, it should be for school bus routes. I feel like that's where.
Well, I don't think that you're breaking that because the Century Code allows it at your discretion.
Well, I'm not talking about Century Code, I'm talking about our own policy though, is trying to wait to manage this workload. But if we're going to, like, I don't, the, the thing that always happens is you go into someone's driveway and then the next door neighbor's like, well, how come you're going in there's not, well, they're on the school bus route. That's our reasoning, that's what we're doing. And you want to, right, and I think, but that's the difference when you start managing this workload amongst neighbors and stuff. Cause if you don't have a kid on the school bus route, guess what? You're not getting open, at least not first anyway, that's how it's going to be this fall.
That's what you're talking about.
Well, and that's what needs to happen though, you need to have a reasoning so at least you're not just going around picking winners and losers. There's got to be a reason, I think that's as good a reason as any, so.
Like she said, that's at our discretion, but then there's old people living out, out, out the street, well, they want, they want access too. And what if they have a medical emergency, they got to get out too.
Right.
We opened it for the school bus route, but they didn't open for us.
But I mean, he said first, you know, I mean, so when you get time limit, that we need, you know, the opportunity to exercise discretion.
Yeah, but I think when it comes to prioritizing and things, if there's one thing that the timing is really an issue on right now, it's the school bus routes. Like you said, mill route used to be one of those things, that's pretty much gone away except for a handful of folks around here. So I think the school bus route needs to take priority of that. Where if there's a timing issue, we need to try and prioritize that as part of the timing. Doesn't mean we're just going to drop everything and always make sure every single part of the bus route is open, but we're probably going to prioritize that in our decision-making as to where we go first and where we try and finish. I think that is reasonable and I think there's some kind of way to figure out a way in the middle. It's probably going to be somewhat inconvenient for you and for us, it's not going to be convenient for anybody, but I think we can work something out, so. Let's say keep those lines of communications open. Hopefully we won't have a storm the rest of the winter, we don't have to worry about it, but in the meantime, I wouldn't gamble on that, so. But I think we need to move on for the sake of timing here, so. The next discussion would be for equipment operators.
Appreciate it, Eric.
So with the equipment operator discussion, I guess, uh, part of the reason bringing that up was, uh, Skylar wanted to come in front here, I guess. I guess the main reason I wanted it on the agenda was just an update as far as how it went with the interviews and the hiring and stuff.
Uh, well, we made an offer too, gentlemen.
Okay.
We were waiting for a few things to, for reemployment to come back, I believe they've all came back now, so. Uh, Monday we should start.
So we have new operators starting on Monday.
Who, who?
Wait, wait. Uh, do you guys want me to say it on air in case he decides he doesn't want to take it?
Well, I guess I heard it off the street already.
Off the street versus the public meetings, two different things, but yeah, I, I don't know. The main thing is, is you, you have someone starting and you, you plan on starting as like a blade operator in Stradford?
It'll be in the Hazelton area.
Okay.
Uh, I would recommend that we either reopen it, I know it was still on our website, the, the job description. I believe we should open it up again or advertise more places, I think we could use more, another guy for sure.
How many did you interview?
Uh, three.
And you offered it to one?
Yep.
Okay, and one other thing before we get lost in any other discussion though, part of the reason I brought it up is we did an instance where one of the applicants, what happened was is the applicant didn't have a high school diploma or a GED, but had a CDL and just for some instance in their life, they did not complete their schooling. And on the application process, and I believe even on the posting, that was kind of a requirement. So then the conversation was had with HR consultant that we could hire that person, but it had to be a commissioner decision, right? And whether or not we want to modify the way we advertise or if we want to leave that up to a commissioner decision if we're going to, if we want to basically go against that, right? That was, I mean, that was part of the discussion.
From what I understand with, from our HR consultant.
Right, so I guess.
It weighs a lot.
Well, you guys have to make that, excuse me, that decision if, I see, excuse me. Let's see the L, outweigh a high school diploma or GED. So we can, if you want, we can modify that and take that out. Just like we modified a CEL being preferred, but not required. With this new waiver, I mean, you talk to everybody else and they're always looking for help, so we've got to start thinking outside the box. I don't believe we'll, as far as I, as far as I know, I, I don't think we're breaking any laws by.
No, it just, the process has always been, I mean, I mean, every job I've applied at, they always wanted you to have a high school diploma or a GED. It's pretty kind of standard question, but I guess the, the question or what we need to decide is in the future, if let's say Skylar interviews and he picks the person, but the one thing is that they don't have a high school diploma, but he believes they're qualified to work the position, one, should he move forward with it? You know, and then two, are we going to either hold a hard line on that or are we going to leave it as our discretion? I, I guess in my opinion, I, I mean, obviously a high school diploma and a GED says something that you finished high school, but at the same time, not everybody finishes it for a variety of reasons that have nothing to do with education. So you, you can't always just say, well, you don't have your high school diploma, you seem perfectly fine and qualified. You maybe have a CDL, there may be several other qualifications, licenses, electrician, plumber, anything, but since you didn't finish high school, we're not going to hire you. So I guess that more so to give direction probably to Emmens County as a whole, not just the road department. If they feel they have a qualified individual and that's the one thing holding back, do we even want to take it off of our application process? Do we want to leave that and just leave, make those decisions at our discretion? What's your guys' opinion? Cause that's.
I guess I would, I would leave it on as we always do, but use it as our discretion if you, you got to think the guy's qualified enough.
Right.
So will you leave that discretion up to the road department then, or do you want me to bring it back to?
Well, I mean, it's just, it'd be nice for us to know, but I mean, do you think the guy's qualified, I would think.
I think it, I think any department head for the most part, if they find an individual, they believe that after their screening and interviewing process, they believe this person's worth hiring and that's the only issue. I, I would say in my mind, I would tell the heads of the department to move forward with that and then come to the commissioners. Like instead of just ruling that individual out, you know? And I don't even know if commissioners would have to do it here, they just give the discretion to department heads. I don't, I mean, they're the ones going to be managing those people.
It's just, it's just nice to know, you know?
Right.
You're not changing the alley, you're reading right.
That's what, I guess that's where I landed when the conversation came to me. It's like, oh, the guy's got all these things, but for some reason in that instance of his life, he didn't finish high school. And, and you're going, I don't know if I have a problem with that, but that's where they ran into that roadblock where it's like, as a part of our process, he basically answered that and it's like, well, can you hire him or can't you? And I, I guess in my opinion, I don't see it being an issue as long as you felt he was a candidate worth hiring. Cause if you hire him and it doesn't turn out, I mean, it kind of is on you on that really.
So could he be hired yet? I mean, could you all have taken the decision not to or?
Well, I don't know if that part was ever a part of it, I just know it was a part of, when they interviewed and this person said it, then when Skylar contacted me, he's like, they contacted Pam with HR there and she said that would be like a commissioner decision if we want to, but it's not like a law thing or anything, so I, which I got to admit too, when they first asked me, I was just like, wow, I don't know what to do either, cause it never really came up, so. I guess in the future, however you guys want to handle it, I guess in my opinion, we just leave it to the department heads to hire him.
I, I agree with that, I think if you think he's qualified to do the job, you know? Because he's still on probation when you hire him, and if it doesn't turn out, then we can, you know, get rid of him. But yeah, I, you know, if you think he qualifies, I, I agree.
I agree to give him a chance.
Somebody who's trying to get their class A CEL and has their class B CEL, I'd rather go through high school than trying to get that. I was going to have my choice, it's not easy, it's not easy at all, I mean, it's, there's a lot of stuff, so, okay.
Okay, so do we want to open it back up and then just?
We could, we need another guy, I would think, right?
I would say at this point, we should probably try and bring on one more person. I just think.
Oh, I, yeah, we'd need that.
We've definitely had a workload issue for a while here, I think it'd be good. So I would say open it back up and, and do some more interviews.
You got two ways, right, that you could throw, put the guys there.
Yep.
And cut the routes down and help the routes, the bus routes to get everything.
Oh, absolutely, especially when it storms. Every, every blade can.
It's moving.
Move a lot, yeah.
That's been our downfall, we haven't had the manpower.
One of them, like one of our routes is 150 miles, it took them 50 hours to open that route during the last storm.
Yeah.
I mean, cause you take 150 miles, now that's just one way, that's one side of the road, so now you, that's 300 miles.
That's a long way to get.
I mean, if you remember, you're traveling at probably, on average, if you're lucky, 20 miles an hour. I mean, you want to go faster, but you get a lot of snow and stuff like that, so get in your car and drive 300 miles at 20 miles an hour and then stop at every intersection and open them up and.
Let's talk again.
Find a, find a drift that's out in the middle of the road, you got to push that back, so it's, it's time consuming and now remember, when you're plowing, put a sheet of white paper on your face and drive down the road. And that's mostly what it's like out there.
Solid way.
Because it's blowing back at you on your windows. It's not fun or easy.
That's where it's such a problem, guys, going into these private driveways and not to stop them. But like he just said, snow blowing up and then windows. And you frost up all the way around, you got a wiper that keeps it open, just in that area. And you come into that yard and there's. and there's three kids playing in a big snow drift that their dad pushed up on the big river, and they've got a snow game in there. And it's just a scenario, the blade comes in, Skylar's in there, blowing these drifts open, he doesn't know where these kids are at.
But you're not making it sound very good for the next applicant, and no, it's gonna be great job, it's so easy, it's the best place to work ever. Don't, please apply, please, it's not that bad, guys. All right, no, I, I think, I think we should open it up and try to recruit more, I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay, so how many weeks does that run?
Well, usually we post it for two weeks, is typically how it runs, and, so, yeah. Okay, um, is there any, you have anything else to add to the equipment operator discussion? So we have someone coming in Monday as the plan, and we're going to list a job and try and bring on someone else.
Yep, is this guy a local?
I believe so, yes. Yep. Okay, uh, next item of discussion on this will be the independent contractors', uh, snow removal rate, or update. So, uh, basically the dozers and the snowcat we brought in, how's everything going?
Uh, pretty good, they're, I think it's a pretty good time, we're, uh, probably over halfway done. Right now we have seven routes, right, so if we break it into seven routes, we have roughly three left, so we're over half. So far, uh, I got some numbers, so far we've spent, now remember, there's, there's a couple days here that we don't have, cause they said, we've spent forty-three thousand dollars on snow removal.
That's total between the two.
With load? Are you on the secondary or just on the primary roads and federal road, do you go on the secondary too?
We're doing just what makes the most logical sense to move all these, so, um, yeah, there might be your primary roads, there might be two drifts there, and then you pass the secondary road to go to the next primary road, so that's not what we're doing. We're just starting an area and just working on.
Kinda almost working south to north, it seems like, with some, like with the snowcat.
The snowcat started in the south, and they were, the, those who started in the, like, the ten-deck area.
A lot of people, they had, they were supposed to be stalling, but they're still, you see the light, they said, that's when you really move snow.
Same, a lot of people, I rode in it, I know you rode in it too, that's quite a piece of machinery.
They're doing what it's designed for, and the dozer's doing what it was, you know, what a dozer will do when it gets into that stuff, you know. The difference between there is the track's width, and you know, the, the snowcat floats on it a lot better.
I was impressed with the speed, I mean, he could really move to that thing.
Speed's pretty quick, and, I mean, dozers have been used for, for eons though, I mean, so, and it's a combination of both. I think we're getting a little bit more productivity out of that snowcat. Also, I mean, the dozer, the, the contractor running the motor, they had a couple breakdowns, they don't think we're good, you know? I mean, that's, snow's very hard on things, and it's not only that, it's the equipment that holds the dozer to your truck and trailer. I mean, that, where it's all out, and snow built up, so you, you have breakdowns, so it's.
They were both broke down, the starter issues.
Yeah, the, the snowcat had some issues.
The rest is down again, I think he's gotta take the panel off the body, that's where it began.
Well, I think it's good that we have two different ones, that way at least somebody was always running, so. What's your, you kind of anticipating how long you think they're gonna be running yet, or did this kind of a?
Um.
We have, we have a meeting here in about two weeks, so I mean.
I think we probably should be pretty much finished up, and that's what I'm guessing, so.
Cause that's where, I mean, my anticipation was I didn't wanna have another special meeting.
No, I think it was, it may be pretty close, like we should be done or either really closely within a couple days.
Are they working during the weekend?
Uh, the snowcat, the contractor with the snowcat, they worked through the weekend.
Oh, they do, okay.
Are you gonna have an open relation with them where if we need to bring them back?
Well, I, it's as soon as whoever calls them, I guess, you know, I don't think we're gonna be exclusive with them unless you wanna put them on a retainer, but.
That might get expensive, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think that in the contracting world, if you treat them right and they treat you right, I think you get that working relationship where, you know, when if we know it, let's just be the first ones to make the phone call.
Right.
Like, not a lot of people know about these, not a lot of counties know about them, so we kinda have that advantage now, and I don't know if that'll always be, they do have two of them, so. I'd like to keep that relationship and hopefully be high on their priority list.
Would you know the guys, did you from years back, you grew up with them?
Well, I ran a business in Minot for years, so, and they were a gravel contractor, so we would, I had a landscaping business, so we would purchase product through them and work with them, and they do, they did some bigger dirt jobs that we'd go out and receive and erosion control. Erosion controls, having a fence and stuff like that, so.
Well, I think overall, it's been a pretty good success with both of them, cause I've seen the work both of them have done, and it's been, I think if we would've done nothing, I think we'd have been in real trouble, I mean, we've gotten lucky, we missed the last couple Colorado lows, but we could easily beat twice as much snow right now, so I think this weather, we utilize this nice weather to widen our roads, everything's looking pretty good out there, and I think at least we're somewhat prepared for the next event when that comes, so I think it was a good move. So, um, any other update with them guys, with the contractors at all, everything just going?
Nope, they're just working.
Okay, okay, well then I guess we'll move on to the next item, which would be, uh, blading and snow removal on private roads. I guess I had this put on the agenda, cause I know we had talked at the last meeting about crafting some kind of a policy or something, I just wondered if there was any new input or any new ideas on that. I know Skylar had looked into some other counties as far as, I know some of the stuff in the folder here as far as they, uh, kinda crafted a snow removal policy and then also a private driver request form. None of these are enacted, these are just ideas from other places, you know, blindly invent a wheel when someone else is doing something that's probably working. So, uh, I guess Skylar, you got anything to add to that, or?
Well, just like the, the snow removal and ice policy, kinda gives people's expectations of what's gonna happen. It talks a little bit about mailboxes, you know, the snow hits it, we're not gonna replace it, if the equipment hits it, we'll, we'll replace it, it was our call, you know? Um, and if we can't pound a post and nip due to it being frozen, we'll just use a temporary one till spring. And if you have a fancy mailbox and it gets hit, well, you're gonna get a standard steel metal, and that's, that's just what we do. Cause a lot of these, you know, and it's states and then the post will be a standard, highway standard, craft tested one, that's just a four by four, the standard wood ones will work. So if you have a old cultivator out there, we take that out, you know, how people do different things with their mailbox stands. Take it out, we're not putting one like that back in there, so. Just kinda gives a guideline of what, what the general public should expect too about, like, these gravel roads are not gonna go out unless there's four inches of snow on the ground, you know, stuff like that, so it's just a, kind of our policy that we could implement and put on our website so people could look at, you know? Maybe we run it in the paper, get posted the fall of the year, so.
I've had people bring it up to me, like, the state has that five-one-one, they call it North Dakota five-one-one.
Yeah.
And it shows the map of the county or of the state, and it shows all their trucks where they're at and where they've been. And some of these people in these rural areas made the comment, they said, it'd be great for us, they both work in town, that they would know where the blades had gone that morning, so they could make preparations which way to go in and out of their place, where the plows had been. Has that ever been considered here in the county?
No, uh, it's being way too expensive and like, uh, we're already being followed enough with Facebook and social media, I don't know if we need that to happen.
I think, well, I, I know that, I think all the blades have the capability, but you have to purchase either the software or the.
Yeah, and that's, it helps tracking, so we know where they're at to, you know, for like hours and stuff like that.
It was like fifteen thousand dollars.
I know the, the reason we did this is, yeah, there was, it was quite expensive. Now, you know, with the amount of blades we have, if there's maybe a different type system you can, I know some of it has been, like you said, for tracking hours and different things, there's some value to it, there's pretty basic systems with it, but once you start adding on to do like, like tracking and like downloading to a server and a website or something, I think that's where, you start to bring in extra equipment and expenses and stuff, which is why we've probably never done it, so.
Yeah, cause you have to have a different website so they can.
I, I think, even correct me if I'm wrong too, but Burley County kinda has a, kind of, I don't wanna say ironed out, cause nothing's ever perfectly ironed out, but they kinda have an expectation of what their route is on like day one, day two, day three, and that's kinda posted on the website.
Secondarys and then, and then, yeah, that snow policy, we kinda named it out too, where then we can designate one, secondary.
Well, I guess that's where, in my mind, I feel like that's something that, piggybacking to the conversation we had earlier with the schools, is if you go and you iron out like day one, this is gonna be the route, yeah, it's built mostly off the school bus route for day one, for the reasons of trying to keep the schools going, and then that's posted like a website. So these folks that are on a non-school bus route down in the corner of the county, they know that they might be day three, day four, day five, you know, rather than always trying to, cause if you go east to west, west, you're always gonna end up, the school bus route doesn't live off those parameters, and that's probably where we should be building our routes mostly off of, at least in the first parts of the day. So having that route with them worked out, and then building how we wanna do it, and then putting that on the website and updating it, you know, like once, twice a year, where it's like, this is, in green is day one, and it's mostly gonna be school bus routes, day two is gonna be this, and then day four and five is gonna be, you know, if you wanna get out sooner than that, you probably have to bust yourself out or something. I think that would be helpful in the communication with the, with the public too, just knowing that if they go on the website, they can see that and, and have an expectation of how long they think it's gonna take, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think working with Josh, the G I S guy, we gave him kind of our map now and then we can, well, what we maintain, and I, I believe he's working on a newer updated map, right, with taking out some of the roads that.
Fixing some of the road.
Yeah, fixing some of the road.
Unlabelled properly, but yeah, once we get priorities, I can create PDFs on our website.
But I think that would be.
You've kinda started this ball rolling, it's just gonna take a while, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Well, I don't think they have, like, passing a policy here today is gonna be, I, I think it's great that you brought it, I think you study it, you're looking over, included in part of the meetings with the schools and emergency services and things like that, is they want to participate in, and you craft a policy where everybody can at least walk away feeling like they got something out of it, and then at least that's a policy we can move forward and start with something, so I think that'd be, I think that's a good way to go about it, so.
So what are you gonna do the rest of the year, private drives, if somebody asks, are you gonna go in and help them out or not?
Well, I've been talking to quite a few people, just through the winter here now, and I, I think there's a, I think there is an expectation already out there with people, there's a lot of people I talk to that take care of themselves that are just like, ah, I, I don't, you shouldn't have to do any of that, well, the next person that relies on you to help them out, they think you should, and everybody's got a different opinion. I think kinda like what Arnold had said earlier, for ever, Emmons County has kinda had a, the policy's really been no policy. You just, and I, I think if people call and they ask for help right now, I think you're probably just gonna have to help them out. Now, where that ends and begins is, I don't know if there's really an answer for this winter right now, because no matter what you do, you're gonna leave somebody sad, so I think.
No, I think like, like Arnold said there, you know, you opened up with your snowplow, I know Alan Better out there, I called him too, is, you know, they, they can open up, but they can't get it back far enough, and that's where, like Arnold said, they come in and they blow it out, then at least they're good for a while, you know?
You know, even if it's a week later, I mean, I've tried three different things, I've tried just, you know, all front end loading works, but just piles out a bucket, and I have a snow pusher, tried that, I can't get close enough to the ditch, the sides are so hot, yeah. If they could at least come in and just let the wing down and blow it out.
It's a tough yard to dig in.
That would be very, I think.
I think that's a lot of them like that.
Right, kinda, I think right now, our policy right now, and it's been that way lately here too, again, is we're opening all the roads right now, I mean, now that we've had the weather, and so I think what happens on some of these is on, on a, on a private type road that we're maybe normally not going in unless somebody asks, I think if you ask to have it widened out, I think we've kinda been doing that. Now, I think the charging part creates an issue of itself, cause we don't have anything in place right now, so it's gonna be tough. Now, maybe next year with your form and your ironed out rates and things like that, I think it'd be a little bit easier to do. I think for now this year, if people call and they want something helped out, we're just gonna have to try and help them out, but it's probably gonna have to be on our timeline, like you said, like Arnold's saying, I mean, they can call all they want, but they're not happening until our bus routes and our main routes and everything we feel like we are obligated to do is done. And then after that, if we get a weather situation like we've had where it's decent, we wanna go out and open up that, that fourteenth avenue somewhere that we normally don't get open right away, and go open that one last or something, or some of these other spots, then I guess we'll have to do it. Cause I mean, that's kinda always the way Emmons County's done it, we probably should just stick to that.
I think that's, that's not an every year event either.
Right.
No, and that form was just, cause the discussion was brought up to start charging or not charging, that's not a, we haven't implemented that policy. That's just kinda giving you a guideline, if you want to, that's kind of what a standard should be, and those are actually our two thousand, uh, twenty rates, so they haven't been updated.
Sure, but I think, I think for now, I think we're probably just gonna have to go about things like we always went about. I mean, if somebody calls and they ask for help, I mean, I think we use our own reasoning and judgment to know if it's a really ridiculous request or if it's like, oh, that's hot, cause we've had them lately, I know you and I have talked, a couple people have called in, I don't know if hardly any of them were ridiculous, I mean, they were just, you know, people that, we only open that road maybe once or twice a year, and it's just, we haven't gotten there yet, and they're wondering if you're gonna get there, cause they need to get to a property or something too, I mean, that's, you know, that's kinda all part of the discussion, I think we've handled it pretty well, I mean, for the most part with the weather. If the weather wouldn't have been what it's been lately, I think some of those roads probably wouldn't have got open, we just wouldn't have been able to get to them. But since it was decent, we got out to places that we, you know, try and, we don't prioritize what we have gotten out to, especially on like section line, a lot of them were, almost all of them were section line roads, it's not like we were going in a lot of private driveways, but, one that did come up though, and we talked about it, was that Baden Dick Road.
Oh, west side of.
Yeah, that was seventy, seventy-sixth Street, I haven't got my platform. Well, so the, the request came that they wanted snow removal out of eighteen oh four for, I believe, it's about one mile, cause then it kinda does turn into a private road, and there's kind of a gate there and stuff, and, and some neighbors were opening it up for us. It is a road, but it's just not a highly maintained road, cause it's literally, it is a section line, it's seventy-sixth Street. Seventy-sixth Street of the east side of eighteen oh four is our radio certified gravel road, and on the other side, it's a, it's, it's not a two-track trail. It's, it's like what we talked about before, it's minimum, it's been gravelled, but it's probably.
Hasn't shifted.
Right, and it's been gravelled before, it's been, I did talk to, uh, I talked to one of the old road supervisors from back in the day, he said, yeah, he said they bladed it like once every ten years, and he said he didn't ever remember doing snow removal, but now that they have a, they have a property, they've developed back there, they need to get back there. And I know one of the neighbors has been opening it up for him, and I told him, I said, we'll probably bring it up at the meeting, it's never really been on our snow removal route, and it's not a priority, but it kinda fits in the mold of one of these roads we've been talking about, where it is a section line, and if the weather and time allows, you know, we could probably get it open. I think for this year, since we don't really have anything ironed out, I, I really don't see a problem with it, but since it's something we don't typically do as far as a route or something, I know he asked to have it added onto the route, but I told him that that road needs to be improved if it's gonna get added to the route, cause it's not really that. It's one of them really, really, really good farm section lines where it's been gravelled and leveled off, but it hasn't been built up and stuff, and so, but. So I guess I was just wondering what you guys' opinion on something like that, because that's where. It's really not different than like what we talked about with Daniel Stoppler's road and some of these other roads where it's, it's property you need to get to, but it's, nobody's living there, so.
You know, we just gotta finish out this year, help them out, whoever needs to help, and next year come up with something. I mean, we just have to come up with something next year, there's no doubt.
I reiterated to him that it's gonna be weather dependent, like, don't come down there two, three days after, it might not be open for two weeks, it might not get open again this winter, it's open once, and was pretty understanding of that. But I didn't wanna send Skylar out too, cause I know we've kinda had our discussion about how we're gonna manage some of this, and I told him, I said, you are probably gonna be the last road in the county open, he was fine with it as long as it got open, so. So I'd say for that one, probably just open it up and just leave it be until it, I mean, so. Cause it's just like some of these other trails, I mean, it's a, it's not a trail, it isn't road, but it just, it's not bus route or residence or something, so.
Okay, we will.
Okay. But then other than that, I'd say for now, the consensus is just keep doing what you're doing, work out something for next year, but.
And then communicate with everybody and.
Right, and I think, yeah, I think that's.
I'm gonna call them, make something wide and open, then I'll give you a call and see what you can do.
Just do the best you can, if that means it's a couple days till it happens or a week, then I guess it is what it is, but.
Sure, yeah, probably that's what we'll do, and then we'll just do the ones we've been doing, and then the other ones will just be a call-in basis, so.
Right, if somebody calls in. Right, if somebody calls in some kind of an emergency, manage it as you see, I mean, if it's something with the sheriff, it's probably a little more of an emergency, if it's just.
Oh, absolutely, like emergencies is a top priority.
If it's a call, just acting like it's an emergency, and you go out there and find out it's really not, then it may be a wait a couple days or a week, I mean, it's hard to say.
Yeah, like if it's an emergency, like they have to call their department or ambulance or.
Right.
Emergency services first, we're not just gonna come out because they're, they think they're having chest pains, you better call someone else.
Right, if you have a medical emergency, don't call the road superintendent first, call the sheriff or the ambulance, and they can coordinate emergency snow removal. I think that's the proper way to handle a true emergency.
Yep.
So, okay. All right, well, with that being said, and the last item for the special meeting is equipment warranties, which it looks like we have some extended warranties.
Yeah, we could do it today, or we could do it next week, and I guess I'd just put it on here in case we, we wanted to talk about it.
Well, I think we should talk about it, I don't know if I have to make a decision right at the moment, but the idea is, is you got two blades that are, warranties probably coming up pretty soon in the sitting?
Yeah, uh, so if you look at the last three digits of two seven two, we have two seven two and two seven three, they're both pretty much identical machines. Um, the two seven two, that will expire in next month on the twentieth, so that warranty will expire. And the other one will expire in March eighth. So if we want to extend the warranties, there's the prices on them, and how long you wanna extend them for.
Well, what do you think the equipment, but what's the condition of them, you think they're good machines yet, or they?
Uh.
A lot of the people.
Two seven three needs some sheer work done to the front, and that is not gonna be covered under warranty, and that's a pretty good job. This was back in, was it May or June when we discussed new blades? Two seven, two seven three, I believe was on there, and we decided to just do one this year, so we kicked these two back with the expectations that we could do extended warranty on them. What we probably do that is now, we're gonna kick these two back to the next two that are coming up. So now, just essentially, we're kicking the can down the road till eventually we run out of road, and we have the new segment. If you decide not to do any warranties, or a year warranty or whatever, one of the last machines we got took fourteen months to get, so.
So how many hours do you get around a year?
Uh, they're average about a thousand.
It is about a thousand.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's, so you can see on the, the, there's current usage, there's, that one machine's got about a thousand hours extra versus the other one, they were both delivered pretty close at the same time.
What do you think, five years or six, or five?
So roughly about a thousand, depending on, you know, this, this winter, we're gonna put on a few more, because there's still storms and stuff like that, so it's.
When you're talking machines, what are you talking about?
There's some stuff in the front end that got wore out.
From private?
Oh, yeah, like the front articulation, you know, that all up there. Now is done by a previous operator.
Okay.
I think the reason the extended warranties started becoming a part of the conversation was that we were having some of these later winters, and we were, you know, we were looking at treatment machines with forty five hundred and, you know, forty eight hundred hours where, you know, it's kinda well understood that six to seven thousand hours on some of these machines, if they're well taken care of, is not a big deal. So that's where we felt like we weren't getting maybe the full value out of our machines, and then we're upgrading for, you know, I mean, obviously upgrading for a new machine and warranty and all that stuff too, but at the same time, you're maybe giving away some value on it. So that's where we felt like maybe running these machines even just an extra year or two wasn't a bad idea, which I believe with our maintenance, you know, and things that we're trying to do and keep things going, I feel like we run a pretty nice fleet, so we probably have a better than average type machine when we, when we trade it in, so that's why our confidence in going with an extended warranty for, you know, let's just, you know, just twelve to twenty-four months or whatever, but we also gotta make sure that we're, you know, we don't wanna, I know the reason Emmens County always went into more of the five year rotation on these blades is because there was a lot of downtime, you were struggling with things. And now with parts and labor, it's even harder now to run an older machine where the, the, the value of a newer machine with some warranty and stuff is probably a little bit better, so.
I know there for a while, we had, every month, we had three thousand dollar bills on some of the cats we had in there, right, that were pretty.
Well, and some of them, right, even though you buy an extended warranty, it doesn't always cover everything either, so you gotta be careful that not only are you purchasing warranty on a, a used machine, but you're also running into issues where you're not, you have a warranty on an older machine, and you still have your downtimes and your bills, so you gotta be careful that. It's not just a silver bullet, but there were a few machines, you know, like this one machine with sixty five hundred hours, you know, if we're looking at maybe replacing it, and that's the next one on the replacement list, maybe you just run without warranty. But then, like you said, it takes fourteen months to get a machine, maybe you purchase warranty for just twelve months to at least cover the big stuff, and you. So ride it out for.
You have a lot of big issues with any of these so far lately.
Well, we have one that's putting fuel into the oil, so they, they're working on a new fuel pump for it or something like that, so. Sometimes it's not always the big stuff, it's just.
Yeah.
Just not as that, yeah.
Well, what was the, refresh my memory again, what was the purchase plan for this year, then to go with one new blade?
Yeah, we do have one showing up, you know. They can't guarantee a, probably their delivery date, but it should be March or April.
Is that a John Deere cat?
That would be a John Deere.
But we also got a, we got a cat one sixty that showed up and.
That one was ordered, that one was the one that took fourteen months, so that one was ordered way before I even.
But we got it in like October, November this year, right?
Uh, December.
Oh, we did get it in December.
Right before this big.
Well, we got it right during one of the storms, I remember.
Right before one of the big snow storms.
Looked a little shy here to the other ones when it went, but, yeah.
So that being said, you know, prices aren't going down on new equipment either.
Yeah.
They keep going up, so.
And then neither one of these machines was planned on being traded in with that new one, right? That other, the machine, cause we're getting a new machine, that other machine's still here that we're trading in?
Well, that's it right now, but that, neither one of these are the machines that are gonna go.
Right, so these are just two machines that weren't a part of any of those deals, so.
These are just two that were.
Price wise.
I think last, June or May or June, we, we did, I think, an option of the three, and then we just cut it down to one. And these are the two we cut out, because we knew that they were gonna need the warranty, so now we've come to that.
Sure.
We need to decide, we wanna put warranty on them, or we can't get rid of them. So, cause then it'll be on, it'll, it'll be fine, so.
Well, I think we can look it over a little bit, kinda review what our purchase plan is gonna be and.
When's the, is that the date on here, two, two? Next month, you said.
Uh, well, the, the, the original delivery date was two twenty of eighteen.
Yeah, so when the.
Two twenty of twenty-three, then will be.
Twenty-three, it'd be two twenty.
So next, next month, the warranty will be up on both of these, so we should probably.
So that would be on the January, or it actually.
One will be up in September, one will be up in March, so we can, I mean, if we wanna, you guys wanna look it over a little bit more and stuff like that, we can make a decision.
Yeah, we can get that on the February meeting then.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, well, and then like you said, two Wolves gonna be on the lift shop there, if anybody wants to talk to him, they have any questions with him, or either. Or you can call Wolf at any time and ask him, you know, any questions you got about cats.
So how many of those are cats out there, how many are John Deere?
Uh, let's see, including the new one we just got?
Yeah.
So we have four cats right now, but one will be traded off for a John Deere here sometime in the next couple months, so we'll be down to three cats.
And then how many John Deere?
Four. Five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's gonna be five, cause the one spares a John Deere too, that, the older machine, that's what I mean, he's holding too.
So we got one John Deere, we're at our two in Higleton right now, uh, one in Litton, and one in.
One in Johnson.
So they have, any of them have any preferences, what they run?
Some do.
I guess a better question would be, any of the commissioners have a preference? We all know that commissioner, at least we'll pluck over the beers, but.
Well, I mean, they're just cheap.
Some guys really like, really like the John Deere, some guys really like the cats, it's just the operator preference. Sometimes we just go with the price.
Yeah, great, so what's the better?
Better for the.
In your opinion, what's the better machine?
Oh, yeah, you're not gonna get me in there with that one too.
Well, I know the one, the new one sixty cat has been pretty impressive from what I've heard, I.
And so the new eight seventy-two John Deere, the, you know, before I started dating, that one sixty was already in the works, and so was that eight seventy-two from John Deere, so they are bigger machines, and they are, well, paying off for it. And with the re-traded value, what, what really, the better thing?
I know what the guys told me is that weight with the snow removal has really been, where they felt it's just been a big difference. And it's basically the same size routine, it's not any taller or longer, but it's just the extra weight and the, the balance and the, so that, we're wondering if the bigger machine has its value, I think, the whole fleet probably doesn't have to be that size, but I think having a mix of a little bit heavier machine and a lighter one definitely has its value, cause.
Aren't you running different tires on it too now?
Yeah, we went to some, got their, the ones we ordered now have wider tires, and they, we went to a snow grip tire.
That tire has been pretty good too.
You don't run no chains, do you?
Uh, I haven't since I've been here, I don't like throwing iron, you know, any more than anybody else does. Those six wheel drives help a lot too, these are six wheel drive machines and stuff.
You can kick that in six wheel drive to keep, that six wheel drive, you can kick that in and out?
Yep, you can kick it in and out, okay. So a lot of guys will run it, it's a four wheel drive until they get into a bad situation, and they know they have that extra security. It's kinda like you do with your car, you know, you know, where you pick up.
Well, I think we'll, uh, we'll plan on reviewing these equipment warranties at the next meeting, so we should have enough time then.
Okay, so then you want us to bring back, like, if these two are gonna be in a purchase agreement, and where they are, where they meet with the next machines in the rotation?
I think that would be good, because like you said, if these are, you know, cause my curious question right now, so you have machine two seventy-three, it's got a thousand more hours. I would say that's probably gonna be one of the higher hour machines we have, so it's probably a prime candidate to be the first one traded out for sold. So I would say that one, in my mind, you maybe only try and do maybe a twelve month warranty, cause you could probably get a machine within twelve and fourteen months, might have to gamble a little. Or this other machine, maybe we keep it for the next go around, unless we would do two machines, then if the budget allows, we do it. But if we're only gonna do one machine, then the higher hour one may be a lower warranty, then the other one maybe a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Try and just keep stepping that, so we're.
Do you, do you look at the history of the machine on repairs before you trade them on the fleet, or do you just go on the year and the hour?
Year and the hour, yeah, unless you get a really bad apple.
You give a lot of.
Well, I think they know, yeah, right, I think they know which machine they probably wanna get rid of too, cause I know that was, I think, two or three years ago, there was one machine that had a little lower hours, and what's wrong with it, what everybody hates, and it felt it broke down. For some reason, it was just a bad machine, and so we got rid of it, we're, and I think that's maybe why we have some higher order machines, that some of these were in a lot better shape, and we actually went, oh, this one's giving us trouble, this one's got five hundred more hours, but it's a good machine, put a warranty on that, that brings the other one, so, so, yeah, I think they have a pretty good idea of what's giving them trouble, so. Okay, well, with no other items on the agenda for the special meeting, I'll entertain an order, a motion to adjourn. Adjourned by Commissioner Everly, meeting adjourned.